Good evening, welcome to the February Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. I'm Rick Mason, President of the Board, and our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification meeting notice.
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills Leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Lake Mills Post Office, and Bank of Lake Mills, and on the district website on February 4th. It was then reposted on Thursday, the 7th, with some items about the bonding as that became available.
Okay. Could we stand and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert D'Imperio?
Here.
David Radel?
Here.
Rick Mason?
Here. Any agenda revisions, approval? And before we do that, you'll notice that we're doing something a little bit different. We're going to have a consent agenda with some, I guess, items that are pretty standard, like minutes and maybe transfer, okay, and transfer of staff and so on. So they're pretty standard thing. But at this point, if you want to look and pull anything out of that agenda, to take it separately, now's the time to do that. Otherwise, we need an agenda approval. So if we pulled something out of there, it would go into under the action items.
Well, I move approval of the agendas printed.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the agenda, and we'll do a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. The agenda is approved, and we need to go into executive session for a few minutes. So motion to do that.
It's written within the body of the agenda, so.
If I can get there.
I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 par. 1, par. C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility by professional staff, OPEB.
Second.
Moving to second and approve going to adjourning to executive session. We need a roll call on that, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio?
Aye.
Dave Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rick Mason?
Aye. We adjourned to executive session. Okay, we have returned from executive session, and we have board reports. Mr. Buckholz has another meeting tonight, and his report will be given by Mrs. Strike.
Cooper is helping with Future Freshman Night, and you'll hear that as an interruption as we continue through the meeting tonight. You'll hear announcements about that. So from his report, it says girls' basketball. Girls' basketball have made, has made history this season, a conference championship for the first time in the program's history with a record of 16-5. Their first playoff game will be against Lakeside on the 22nd. Boys' basketball with a 13-5 record, they're second in conference, and they're looking to receive a three or four seed in the playoffs. Wrestling. Wrestling had their regional tournament at Catholic Memorial High School last Saturday. Freshmen Caleb Quest and senior Cooper Buckholz are moving into sectional tournament, to the sectional tournament in Campbellport this Saturday. Other than sports, Student Council is currently selling Valentine Day candy grams, and they're also planning a fundraiser for March. The French Club is currently fundraising to save the rhinos, and they're fundraising for various charities that prevent poaching in Africa, defending this endangered species. And then the Spring Play, the Spring Play, or the Greek mythology Olympagans, is that how you say it? And I'm always, I have to learn that, has begun rehearsals, and they plan to get to put together a great comedy performance for the spring.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Radel, Wisconsin Association of School Boards Resolution Update.
Yeah, so I attended the conference a couple weeks ago. It was a fantastic experience, very interesting. As you may recall, at the last board meeting, the January board meeting, there were 22 resolutions brought to the floor by the WASB Policy Group. The bottom line is all 22 resolutions passed. It was fascinating, the debate that went on in the room. There were about 278 delegates attending, and being my first time, what I, first time to attend, I found it very interesting that things really broke down between a large school district versus a small school district, and a wealthy school district versus some of the poorer school districts. And that's where most of the debate, and debates, the debate was usually around a word or two depending upon the resolution. But in the end, all the resolutions passed, and again, very educational for me. And one of the highlights was, I was in the hallway of the convention building, and Senator Herb Cole came walking down, a very tiny man, and had the opportunity to shake his hand and tell him thank you for all the things that he's done for the state of Wisconsin, for education in particular. We had just learned the evening before that he had contributed $100 million to the new Pfizer Forum, the Bucks Arena, for the construction of that. So that was, that was pretty neat to get to thank someone who's done so much for all of us. So it was a fantastic experience.
Good, thank you. Thank you for representing us. Mr. D'Imperio, update on the Facilities Committee and Referendum.
Well, since the last time that we've met, there've been a number of meetings, planning meetings. One of the more recent, we had an opportunity to review the cost estimates for the schematic design that I had on the screen here at our, at our last meeting, and we found that we needed to make some, some adjustments to that. They were not in the overall impact of the project, they were more in some of the details. We will be meeting again this week to look at what is called the Design Development Drawings, which are very close to being the final drawings, and that will be followed with another set of estimates based on those documents. And so I would expect at the March meeting that I'll be able to report in much greater detail as to what those projects are going to represent. Also, there have been meetings with, looking at the finishes of the building, meetings, meetings with furniture suppliers to discuss those, those possibilities. Tomorrow, the bids will be due for the actual artificial turf, and that is being done because those are, that is a very long lead time item, and so we will have at least that firm number in hand. And in two weeks, the bids for the fire protection, this entire building is going to be sprinkled, it is not partially sprinkled, but the entire building will be sprinkled, which will make this project, as well as any future projects, much easier to, to manage in terms of code compliance, so.
Good, thank you. Do you have, Kial's?
I do, for Mr. Vogel.
Kial Vogel, high school principal?
He's at Future Freshman Night, and he wanted to give special thanks to the Link Crew for organizing and introducing our new class of 2023 to the high school. A reminder that we will be doing ACT and work keys and pre-ACT testing February 20th and 21st. Last week, Mr. Vogel went to the middle school and high school principal convention, and he attended sessions related to assessments and also student engagements, engagement. Congratulations to the Lake Mills FFA Parliamentary Procedure Team for advancing to sectionals with their second place finish at the District FFA Speaking Competition in Fort last week. The six-person team consists of Mia Schrader, Madeline Miller Nielsen, Riley Kalowski, Erin Strohs, Emily Strohs, and Ginny Clucker. And then also congratulations to the Forensics Team for winning second place at the large team capital conference, Forensics Meet. That was really exciting. I'm not sure that you know this, but we have so many students interested in forensics at this time that they have to try out for the forensics team. It's a pretty, pretty competitive group we have there. Just some things that are coming up. February 15th will be the Winter Pep Rally. That's not just for sports, but that's for all the activities that have happened since the last pep rally. The 16th are wrestling sectionals, the 18th is FFA Week, the 18th through the 22nd. And then on the 20th, as Cooper mentioned, it'll be regional girls' basketball at home against Lakeside, and then on the 26th, the boys' basketball regional will start.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
Boy, it was sure nice to hear Bob say the word "March." It's, I don't think anything's happened between the last board meeting and now, but, and March is historically our highest snow month, but we have still been doing a lot of work. I'm kind of a little sad to hear that our freshmen are coming up here already. It's a big, that also is a big indication of spring. A couple of things just going around, going on with students, wrestling's in full swing. We had, although with snow days and different things, it was our first home meet tonight. Girls' basketball is also in full swing. We had our talent show last Friday, which is one of my favorite things during the school year. Our middle school students are so brave and talented, it's fun to watch them. Couple of, we had staff development. At the end of January, our teams did some team building activities, and then our February 22nd in-service will be on building community and a book study on that. We will be having Valentine's Day with our parents on the 14th for parent teacher conferences. Apparently, I wasn't planning on going anywhere on the 14th, so I mistakenly scheduled it on that day, and then we'll have them the next week as well, on the 21st for our, our spring parent teacher conferences.
Any questions?
Any questions for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal.
Good evening, a couple of updates. Our staff development in January was on our safety training, which was presented in collaboration with local law enforcement and EMS. We also spent the afternoon with our ready math representatives for our final professional development, digging into our data and planning forward for the rest of the school year. Last week, we met with every grade level for our data, data team meetings. We looked grade level-wise and then at individual students to make specific plans to help everyone meet their spring growth and goals for the end of the year. This past Friday, our PTO had our movie night. It was great to see so many families out, braving the weather and coming in to enjoy an activity with one another, meeting neighbors at the school. And finally, parent teacher conferences are scheduled for February 21st and 28th. Parents can go onto Family Access to sign up if they haven't already secured their slot. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, Special Ed Director, Middle School Assistant Principal.
Good evening.
Anything else?
I think that's it for right now. Just a couple of professional development things that I wanted to let you know about. At the days in, at the days in January, Jamie Seabird and I did our kind of last trauma training. We had all the high school professional staff, and then including any new staff from buildings, both support staff and teaching staff. And so now, with the conclusion of that day, all of our staff from elementary on up have been trained in some sort of mental health, first aid type of training. So we're happy to have that completed. And then upcoming for professional development, on the 22nd of February, we'll be doing our NVCI refresher. So we have two, two sessions, an AM and a PM, and we have over 60 staff that are certified in that, so we will get them all refreshed and, and ready and some, some strategies that way.
Can you just explain what that is?
I can. Non-VCI is, stands for nonviolent certi, nonviolent certified, well now you're going to put me on the spot.
Crisis intervention.
Crisis intervention, sorry. And it really is about de-escalation strategies. That's the most important piece of it when students are in some sort of crisis. The biggest piece is about de-escalation. There are some, some other pieces, whether a child is in physical danger to himself or others, that there are some restraints that, that are used or utilized, but that is the absolute last resort. So it's really about the de-escalation techniques.
Anything else? Thank you.
All right.
Mrs. Seabird, Learning and Student Services Director.
Hi. So just a couple updates. We got notification that we got our Educator Effectiveness Grant in the amount of $9,280, and that is the grant that is used to pay for the evaluation system we use for teachers that's required by the state. So it's a nice grant to get. We also have our $15,000 AODA grant that is in year two, and that's how we paid for our staff to attend the trauma training that were non-teachers. So when we had our bus drivers attend, and we had our food service people attend, we paid for their time during, using the AODA grant. We're also sending two new teachers, not, not new teachers, but two teachers new to web or Link Crew training this year down in Chicago, and that costs about $5,000 for their training. So that's a nice use of that money. And then we do some various other conferences, but all related to mostly mental health and trauma, and just learning about that kind of stuff with the AODA grant. Tonight, I also want to give you an update on summer school and where we're at with that. So every parent received a Summer School at a Glance flyer that looks something like this, maybe a little bit more colorful when it's emailed to them. But what this was done, Julie Mashie had a great idea of just letting parents know what dates are coming and when things are, like, online registration starts March 7th. So we want parents to put that date on their calendar so that they know that they can block out that time at 5:00 to get home and get the, if you want bowling, you better be on your computer at 5:00, like that, that type of thing, because some of those classes fill very, very quickly. We have, I put notes on here, we have 48 different course offerings at the middle school, 43 different course offerings at the elementary school, and four different courses at the high school level, mostly related to sports, but we also want to encourage our students to TA, especially if they're interested in working with children or are exploring a career in education. If they would like to TA, that can be taken as a course, and we get to count that as attendance, and that's a great way, if you loved playing with clay when you were in elementary school and you want to help others do it, it's a great time to do that also. So all of the courses are open to anybody in high school to help TA during those, those courses, so that's really great. And if you really love it and you want to do it further on, sometimes it leads to a job. So we do employ some of our kids who do a nice job. Some of our new courses this year at the elementary school, we're going to offer Kids in the Kitchen class, kind of modeling it after some of the shows on the Food Network that, to take off of those championship-type shows. We're going to offer a Dance, 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 which is a more modern dance. Katie Burton came up with that one and wants to offer some cool dance moves for kids, including some Fortnite dances, which I know nothing about, but I'm glad she does. Some graphic novels to explore different forms of reading with kids, and a class called Arctic Blast, which we used to offer something called Everything Ice Cream, but we decided to expand it to more than just ice cream and do frozen foods in general, and have some fun with that. At the middle school, we're going to offer a Ukulele Class. Mr. Shanafelt offers that during his elementary curriculum, and it's very popular amongst some of the kids, so we're going to try offering that during the summer also. We're going to expand our international cooking. International cooking became a very popular class last year, especially as they went to the market and made sushi, and they got to really explore some different things. So we're going to offer an International Cooking II class, which is going to be fun because you don't have to take International Cooking I first. It's just more different international cooking than the first one. We just want to differentiate between the two. And then we're also expanding our guitar offerings, where we've offered beginning guitar, and now we're also offering, like, if you'd like to continue with guitar, something like that. And Mr. Shanafelt also is offering a class called Music Write, Produce, Record. It's been offered a couple times before, and we haven't had a lot of sign up for it, but it sounds so cool, and after those third and fourth graders just made that CD with him and they wrote all their own music, we're hoping that there are more kids interested in doing that kind of work, because how cool is it that they got to bring home a CD of the music that they wrote and recorded? And that's what that class is all about. So that would be really awesome. So, any questions?
Thank you. Director of Business Services, Mrs. Brocker.
Just have two things I want to highlight. In, on our board docs, I gave you our 2018-19 enrollment update, so are showing our January enrollment as well as our September enrollment, which I provided for you in October. We're happy to report that we have an increase in our FTE, our Full Time Equivalence of 12 students from September to January, and you can look at the details to see how the enrollment shifted. And then the other thing that I want to highlight is, today we received our bids for our, our bond sale for the referendum, and we're very pleased to announce, which we will get to on the agenda later, that our rate was just under 3%. We're at 2.99%. We received eight bids, and we're very pleased with the outcome of the bids today, so excited about that.
Good, thank you. And our Superintendent, Mrs. Strike.
I just wanted to mention again that we are moving into a consent agenda format, so the meeting might seem a little bit different to you as you listen, and we will continue to, to improve on that process as we go along and learn about how to use that more efficiently. Lots of talk about hours of instruction and all of our snow days and cold days, and so I did send an email out to all families and staff, but I also wanted just to announce to the community, because no matter where I go, this is what I'm asked about, no matter what city I'm in or where I go. So at this moment, we are still okay with our hours of instruction. We no longer have that structure, structure where there's so many days that we have to go to school, it's all about hours and minutes. And so, you know, as we're sitting here, we're waiting for the new storm to hit tonight, I'm saying, at this moment, we're okay. And I wanted to say that the reason for that is because this board in the past was very conservative when the model shifted from Department of Public Instruction requiring a certain number of days to that system of hours. At that time, I remember sitting here, and the board said, "We are not going to go to the minimum. We are going to continue to offer the maximum number of instruction hours that we have in the past." And so that's why every community is going to be different, depending upon how they created their calendar. So you can't compare what our neighbors might be doing, and I will continue to update parents about that as we go along. And then attached is the Director's Report for the Recreation Program, and all I can say is it keeps growing and expanding even month to month. We're working on some pretty new exciting, and exciting things for the summer. And yesterday was Family Fun Day, and they had over 500 people attend that, so. Last weekend was Knickerbocker, and just a wonderful, wonderful event, and the Recreation Department was a huge part of that, so it's a great program. That's all I'm going to share at this time.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes?
I had one addition that I didn't hear, the, at the middle school and high school, Solent Ensemble is also happening on the 23rd for middle school and high school students. So that's also happening.
Good, good, thanks. Community input?
Mr. Klatz.
Mr. Klatz.
Hello. I'm Brad Klatz. I am the President of the Lake Mills Education Association, and I wanted to let you know that today starts, I love our public school week, and it's on this occasion that we'd like to recognize this board and administrators that are strong advocates, not only for Lake Mills students, but for public education students in all of Wisconsin. We are grateful that you support positions at WASB, as Mr. Radel most recently did, that protect Wisconsin students and the funding that helps them flourish. The staff, administrators, and the board have such an excellent work relationship to solve problems is another reason why we love our public school. For example, there is the language we developed with Mrs. Strike and Mrs. Brocker to allow a staff member to donate a sick day to another facing dire circumstances without enough sick days to cover treatment. You approve the language, and because of your compassion, we know that it's already being used to improve the life of a teacher in the district, though because of confidentiality, we don't know who that is. I often tell anyone who will listen that Lake Mills has a unique attitude of collaboration that unites school board members, administrators, employees, parents, and students. We are so very lucky to be here, and we love our public school. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go into the consent agenda, and just to give you, I guess, a little flavor for what might be in there, there's a number, number of items, but things like last month's meeting, meeting minutes, the Treasury's report, staff resignation.
Support staff.
Support staff resignation, support staff letters of assignment, and so forth. Those are the kind of things that are in the consent agenda, and any one of the board members has the ability and right to pull something out of there and put it under the action item or further discuss that particular item.
Please move to your fifth station. Thank you.
Since there were none, no concerns about it, I will entertain approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda, agenda for February 11th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, moving to second to approve the consent agenda. Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Sure. Dave Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio?
Aye.
Rick Mason?
Aye. And that is approved unanimously. We're going to move on to action items. Approval of resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds.
We discussed this at our Finance Committee meeting right before this meeting, and I have attached the resolution that was provided to us from our attorney. I up, actually, in our notes, it says the draft resolution, but today I did get the final resolution, so that is attached to our agenda. We are recommending to accept the bid from Piper Jaffray, which overall, the bid is just under 3%, which we received today.
Take a motion, please.
I move the board approve a resolution awarding the sale of 9,390,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds to Piper Jaffray. I would also move a copy of said resolution be included in the minutes of this meeting in its entirety.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the resolution. Who got that?
I'll give it to her.
We'll give it to Dr. Delaney.
Don?
All right, roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio?
Aye.
Dave Radel?
Aye.
Rick Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff retirement.
At this time, we're going to be discussing the retirement for Ms. Sue Haviland, who's been with us for 12 years as a family consumer science teacher, and this was very hard for her to do, so it's an emotional time for her to submit that retirement letter.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff retirement of Ms. Sue Haviland, and thank her for her dedication to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moving second by Dr. Delaney. Any discussion, any comments on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio?
Aye.
Dave Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rick Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff retirement.
Ms. Corey Tolls, paraeducator extraordinaire at the elementary school, has also submitted a letter. She has been with us for 27 years, very specifically working with kids with reading.
I move the board approve the support staff retirement of Ms. Corey Tolls, and thank her for her 27 dedicated years to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second. Moving to second to approve the staff retirement, support staff's retirement. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Bob D'Imperio?
Aye.
Dave Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Rick Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of varsity baseball trip.
This is showing up on an action item because it's very, very short notice, so we wanted to bring this to your attention. The baseball team has been invited to play in a tournament, the Wisconsin Dells Woodside Sports Complex, and they'd like to stay overnight in the Dells.
I move the board approve the overnight varsity baseball trip in April 2019. It is understood that the board will incur no cost in nineteen. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the April baseball trip. Questions on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Dave Radel.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio.
Aye.
Rick Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Future board agenda items.
We know that we'll be having some resignations for professional and support staff for next month. As Mr. D'Imperio said, we'll have more information to share about facilities, including, we'll have some bids to bring before you.
Anything else? Anybody think of? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Second. Dr. Delaney again, jumped in there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay, we are adjourned.